Monday, January eleventh, twenty sixteen.
Commissioner Renaud?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, if you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning.
Morning. In my work, I love to use the proverbs because it's a book of wisdom, and I have this quote this morning, and I hold for all of us. Wisdom is holding on to the old just as long as it's good and grabbing the new as soon as it's better. And I believe that's our job, isn't it, to make things better? Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day, the sunshine that's outside even though it's cold. And Lord, we just thank you for these folks who are taking their time and serving us to make our county a better place. And Lord, I just pray for each of them, for everyone that's a part of this meeting today, that you would give them wisdom and help decisions be made to help us go forward and to help us have progress in our community. We could continue to pray for our community, for our law enforcement, and for all those who serve us in that way, and fire and EMS and all those folks. Lord, help us just to be a place where people want to live, love to live, and love to serve. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have one item of business. Is Alan here?
I don't see Alan.
Yeah, he knew was on. Commissioners, most of the information is there, and I'll make sure that Alan is here on Wednesday when we approve that grant, the application of that grant, to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so we'll push this to Wednesday?
All right.
All right.
You got a public comment today or not?
Yeah, do we have any public comment? Sign up or? Nope, okay. With that, during the current commission, and we would begin the selection of chairman for the ensuing year. I'd say, appreciate being chair for the year, and it was an honor, and I learned a lot and did my best, so. With that, are there any nominations for chair for the ensuing year, twenty sixteen?
I'd like to nominate the Honorable Commissioner Howard.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
All right. Is there a nomination for chairperson for the ensuing year?
Vice Chair, sir.
There, yeah, I don't want to give it away. Is there a nomination?
We can retalk about this.
Is there a nomination for vice chair for the ensuing year? If there's not, I think Randy would be a fine choice for vice chair.
As chairman, I nominate Randy Renaud, vice chair.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Bring this to the matter of dates and times for regular meetings and study sessions of the Board of Commissioners for twenty sixteen.
On this, you know, I've thought about this a lot, plus I've had people contact me. We've had people stand right before us over this last year and the years before. And looking back over the years, it's, we've had the meetings, at least all the years that you and I have been on the commission, and even before that, so I think it's going on eight or ten years that we've had meetings at eight-thirty in the morning. And you look at other commissions and municipalities, they're all over the place, but for the most part, I think that a lot of them have them in the evenings. I think that we really should consider looking at having our meetings in the evenings, even though more people may not appear, but it gives them the opportunity. And I think the meetings should be held at a time that are at a convenience for our constituents, not at a convenience for the board. And so, I would like to suggest and look at holding our meetings in the evening, evening time, for our constituents that work in the city and other places, that gives them the opportunity to come to these meetings.
Question I would have would be, how many hourly employees could that impact, or on a regular basis or on an as-needed basis, that would have to be called back in for those meetings?
And I agree there'd be some, but then again, we're doing it, then we're doing that at the convenience of the county and the convenience for us, and the government is there for the people that want to participate. And the meeting should be placed at a time that are at the convenience of our constituents and our people, and not at our convenience of the government.
But my question is, is how many? Who does that impact on a regular basis and who does it not?
It would affect some.
But some are salaried.
Yes.
So I'm thinking of the hourly people, who are we talking about, hourly people that will be impacted?
And I would say a very minimal amount, and even then, they could work with their supervisors to flex their hours, come in a little late if they're going to be here, or come in a little later the next day.
So basically, we could do comp time, basically.
Yeah, they could, well, yeah, flex their hours a little bit. The next day, come in a few hours late if they're here, and that's the same for the salaried employees.
Has the commission ever met at an evening before?
Years ago.
We have, Don always talked about it, and my grandpa was on there when they tried it. I think they did evening meetings, and they even rotated, went out to like Williamsburg, Pomona, some smaller towns for one meeting a month. I know they said they, it was harder to do business. For instance, if we were financing something or wanting to do business, it was hard to get a representative to come. I think they said they went a stretch, oh, a dozen meetings, nobody showed up, so attendance wasn't better. And then, of course, staff, you know, coming in after hours too. They said, then after that, the practice was kind of, if we have something that we thought might be of interest to the general public, to make a point to move that meeting back, which maybe we could do a better job of. But, you know, some, I think you guys know this, some agendas, I mean, we may be looking at culvert bids, tire bids, I mean, it's just, it's routine in nature, it's, you know, procedural.
I would even think that maybe a study session would be more appropriate for an evening than a meeting, because a meeting sometimes, like you say, are pretty cut and dried, as opposed to maybe the study session when you're really discussing it.
Study session would make sense, that's when a little bit more candid conversation happens, and it's earlier in the process, I'd say, public input would be more, it'd be a good time for considering public input.
I will say, in three years, I've only had one person contact me in three years about the interest in having the meetings in the evening, and that was my first year on, and I haven't had anybody contact me about it since then.
In the past, I've been on the commission when we tried doing evening meetings, and the response was very minimal at best. And we decided at that time to go back to regular meetings like we're doing right now. I prefer to have the meetings continue as we have right now, same format, same meeting time.
I would say the other thing to kind of keep in mind is that some of the other entities that come in, our media comes in, and here, and we have one of those here today, but that is concerning that the other is not. And so, and that has been an issue, and so I kind of, and that's during working hours. So I do kind of worry about that a little bit. If we go outside of working hours, what's that going to mean, the impact that that has on our coverage for the local media, and where a lot of people rely on those two outlets to get the information that we're talking about and stuff? So I do kind of, that is, I think, a consideration also.
Well, the meetings that are held in the evenings for the city are regularly reported in the media, so that they have participation there when the city does their meetings in the evenings.
Right, and I, and I, I kind of want to say this. But at the same time, there's been several occasions where we don't have both news outlets here during, again, business hours. And so, I guess I'm wondering what the impact would be if we were outside of business hours.
Well, I would agree we should accommodate the public, and if it would make a difference, I would be acceptable to the evening meeting. That does not bother me at all, it's just, is there a benefit or not a benefit, or perceived as one, but would more people attend?
That's where I am too, I'm just not convinced there's a benefit. I'd be quick to, if we have an item that I think even would remotely be of interest, to move that, but.
And that might be something maybe we can do as we go through the agenda and meetings and say, "Look, we want to move this meeting to an evening meeting because we feel that it is of one of significant importance, or could have more public participation if we did that."
And no matter what time of day you hold your meetings, that there's, you know, there's no guarantee that you're going to have more participation, it's just the opportunity, the folks that, the folks that come in the morning meetings usually are not working someplace else, that's not to say that people that work would come, it's just presenting the opportunity for the constituency and the folks that we serve.
Well, my thought is, we've had a couple of issues this year that was fairly large, and we didn't seem to have any trouble filling the room up at the eight-thirty meeting for the people who wanted to attend it. I mean, I think if it's something important to them, they will make the time to be here at eight-thirty. I'd go along more with the study sessions in the evening and then the regular meetings on a regular time if we're going to do it, which would only be giving us two evening meetings a month instead of having six meetings in the evening.
Is that something we want to try?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion, I'll just put it out there, I'll make a motion to leave the meetings as they are.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Usually go last, yes.
Commissioner Harris?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to, excuse me. Scheduling a study session to review the county commission districts pursuant to Kansas statute. And this is something we do every year, required by law, to basically make sure that population hasn't shifted so much that the five commission districts are not equal in population, at least within tolerances. And we work with the clerk of this data to adjust districts if needed. I don't expect that there's been a large boom in any of our districts since last year, but with statute, we'll do it. So when would be, when would you recommend?
I'm hoping for whenever you guys are.
When's our next study session?
That's what I was wondering.
It'll be two weeks from now.
January twenty-fifth, isn't it?
Yep, it's twenty-fifth.
Is that soon enough to do them, is there a date we have to have it done by or anything, or no? Okay. That'd be my idea too, that'd be great to do at that date.
Sounds good. Is that, do we need to vote to set that date?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and make it?
I make a motion that we consider the study session, review the county districts on January the twenty-fifth at our study session.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
All right, the board appointments. Commissioners, go to a number of boards or organizations we work with. See, we can go down the list. Area Agency on Aging, Rick does this right now, but there's a good chance you're going to pick up Economic Development, which is traditionally the chair.
When does that one meet, Rick?
They meet, it's not even monthly, they usually go like a three-month period for their meetings. So it's not a really regular thing. I could probably stay on that, like I said, it's not a monthly thing even or weekly, it's.
Not really, not overly burdensome? The ECAN Board, which I believe.
Do we need, though, as we make these assignments, don't we, didn't we last year make the motion and then reappoint the folks by?
That's probably the cleaner way to do it.
I think that's what we did last year, or you want to just wait until with each one?
What are you?
The past we've gone through, kind of called them out, and that way you can look at the end and say, "Well, heck, this guy's only got one, this guy's got five."
Yeah, that's what we did last year, because we did make some adjustments at the end, so we talked about it, and then.
Yep.
Very good. I'm on the ECAN Board, and have been for all the years I've been on the commission, and would like to go ahead and stay on, actually, I've become kind of their resident HR guy when they redo their manuals and HR things like that, so unless somebody has a burning desire to be on that, I'd like to stay.
Convention and Visitors Bureau?
I'm there, and I would like to stay if possible. You know, I'll give it up if somebody wants to do it.
Lake Region Solid Waste Authority?
Don Stollmeyer and I have talked about this, we currently have him as the representative, and he made indication to me that he would like to continue to serve in that capacity if the board would see fit to do so.
My only, I guess, concern, and you know, historically, a commissioner has been appointed to this, I've done it, and it's fine, I guess, if there's no business, or, I mean, there is some monetary, they apply for grants, I guess, a lot of the other counties send commissioners, and I, if there's money involved, and it's, there's a, it is an organization, I guess, I kind of think we should send, it's fine when nothing happens, but once, you know, there's something comes up where they need to divvy up money, I feel like, or, you know, or some kind of action item, I think that's what it will matter, what kind of representation we have.
So you're saying you'd like to be on that board?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, we should, probably a reason we should send a commission to these.
And I would agree with you, Cole, I don't think the two are mutually exclusive. I think Don could, you know, continue to sit and participate, but I would like to see a board member as well.
Do you know when they meet, Cole?
Either once a month or once every other month. It rotates between the counties, so you may be in Coffey County, Osage County, Anderson County, or Miami. Is that right, Jim?
Yep.
But it's a regional deal. Lynn, I think you're right, yep, it is, yep. I never, is it every other month? Doesn't happen very often. I want to say it's every other month, but I'm not for certain.
If nobody wants to do that, I'm okay with doing that one.
Okay, all right, it's an interesting one to prefer.
But I would certainly want Don Stollmeyer to know that, simply because, like you're saying, Derek, we feel like there has to be a commissioner on it, but not that, any other reason for doing that.
You know, it was formed with all those counties, and since then, they've applied for grants, and they have assets. I guess there's some ownership there, and, you know.
See, as though Don put that forward whenever he left the commission, and he had the list of theirs, that not all the counties have a commissioner on that board, though.
Well, and that very well might be the case, I would just recommend that we have one, and if it would please the board, I can call Don and let him know that I made that recommendation and make sure that there are no hard feelings, but I can't imagine why.
Well, what about this, though, is that if we put a commissioner on there, would it be inappropriate to have Don still remain on there as a representative because of his past knowledge and experience? I mean, there's nothing that precludes us from appointing him as a representative, but then actually having a commissioner on there.
Well, if the board, if that board's bylaws don't, I mean, we can't appoint somebody to someone else's board, we can only send a representative for our appointment.
The board, just let me know which way you guys want to go, because I'm good either way.
All right. Neighborhood Revitalization. It's a program with the city to review and approve tax, property tax incentives for the redevelopment within the city of Ottawa.
You're on that right now.
And I think you've done a good job, too.
I am, yep.
And it affects your district.
It's been so long since we've had a meeting.
It affects your district the most too, doesn't it, probably?
Yeah, probably.
I mean, unless you've got qualms about, or warning off that board, I'd.
Nope, I'd be happy to do it. Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, I've been doing that, and I wanted to stay on if nobody else wants to do it.
All right. Economic Development, Franklin County Development Council?
And as you indicated, that usually, the chair is usually represented there, and that would be Rick unless he's got some adversion to it.
I don't have any.
I think that's a pretty important one to have our chair at, I think.
I don't have any issues with any of them, to be honest with you, so.
Hospital Board, something I've done, be happy to keep doing.
Sounds good to me.
RCD, Resource and Conservation Development?
I'm currently doing that one. That's another one that doesn't, is not a monthly thing, I don't know how exactly what our meetings are, but they're not monthly, they're scattered out some, so it's not a.
Aren't they like quarterly?
I think so, probably, so I don't have a problem with staying on that one.
Wellsville Chamber?
I've got that one, and I'd like to stay there.
Heartland Works Incorporated, this is a new one.
Yep, and I'm on that board, we actually haven't had a board meeting yet, but that's in Topeka, it's held in the evenings. They meet every couple of months, but it's about the local workforce and development. And I've done a lot of studying about it, have had different communications, but we haven't met as a board. And unless someone else wants to take that over and drive to Topeka in the evenings whenever they're held, I'll be happy to, I'd be happy to stay on that board.
Sounds like you've already got your feet wet with it, so.
Give you something to do in the evenings now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not held during our meeting times, however, or would have been our meeting times. The other question that begs, well, the question that's been begged here is that in looking at the regional, the Lake Region Waste Authority, because of money involved, I don't know why we have, or I hadn't thought of this in the past, but during our budgeting process, we provide money to ELC, Historical Society, COF, Fair Boards, there are other boards that exist out there that taxpayer dollars go to, but we don't have representation on those boards. Should we be looking at that and adding those additional boards to this selection for having representation going to those boards where decisions are being made, where taxpayer dollars are going to them?
Representation might be, I just throw this out before we, first of all, I think we definitely want to reach out to them, propose the idea, rather than, of course, we wouldn't want to appoint ourselves here, but.
Exactly.
Like, for instance, I'm on the hospital board, or I go to the hospital board, I don't vote, I'm more or less liaison between the two.
Exactly.
We per, when we own the hospital and principal, but they pretty well, they have a board of directors that govern themselves. But that's important, I think, having a liaison, so I mean, maybe a liaison position would be more, you know, we're not necessarily looking to be voting members, in my thoughts at least, I don't.
I think Steve's saying, if we send someone to everything board that we give money to, we're going to have to get more than five of us, I mean, we're talking Fair Board, we're talking.
Or increase our salaries.
COF money, we're talking Lanesir, we have a lot of things we're going to be.
But I agree, there's some big ones that we do send a sizable amount of money, and community goods so important that it might.
And in fact, ELC and COF, we send more money to them than we do to the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority, and we're saying that we should have a representative on there.
Well, and I don't know, and any of you would know better than me, so correct me if I'm wrong, but these are the organizations that presumably have reached out to us and requested a board member appointment. And so, I, I mean, if ELC hasn't, we can't sit here today and say, "Cole, you're going to be on the ELC board." But I do think the liaison idea is a good idea, and I can't imagine why, I mean, they wouldn't object to that, so that might be something to consider.
But as Rick says, you know, that, and I just jotted down here, though, there may, there's others, I'm sure, that it would start creating a pretty full platter. It's just, I'm thinking, though, with the money.
We can have administration reach out to them and discuss that at an earlier date, or I suppose, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not. For instance, I'm going to throw Animal Shelter out there.
Yeah, they're.
In the past, you know, there's been a lot of discussion.
Well, why can't John and Derek contact them and find out what their expectation is?
Yep.
Are they okay with a representative that's not, or, I mean, unless, I mean, if they're asking for a voting person who represents the board, well, then that makes it more clear than if you're saying, whatever. I don't know, John, what your thoughts are on that.
Well, that'd be an option, I was trying to explain, the other would be, you know, if a commissioner had an interest in a board or saw it as a valuable thing, for instance, Animal Shelter, just to maintain the good relationship that we now have, I would be willing to go to their meetings, just sit, listen, and say, you know, report back what I hear, just so we know what good things they're doing. But it could be commissioner, could start that process.
Another option would be to request, we already do when they come in and ask for funding. They come in and give an annual report, we could ask them to come in and to do their quarterly reports or something that the board would see fit if they wanted to do something like that.
Yep.
So I could reach out to them and have a conversation about that and report back to the board on that.
So, somebody been keeping, you've been keeping score?
I can run down them really fast. So we have the East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board is Commissioner Howard, the ECAN Board, Commissioner Harris, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Commissioner Renaud, Lake Region Solid Waste, Commissioner Renaud, Neighborhood Revitalization Board, Commissioner Waymire, the Chamber Board, Commissioner Dunn, FCDC, Commissioner Howard, Ransom Memorial, Commissioner Waymire, RCND is Commissioner Howard, Wellsville Chamber, Commissioner Renaud, and Heartland Works, Commissioner Harris.
Hi, I wasn't trying to count all of them, but I know I have three, and Roy, you have one. Would you be interested in taking the Eastern Kansas Area on Aging? See, I know my time is up, I got an email from Elizabeth down there that I'm up for reelection down there for my position, so. Would you be interested in that one?
I'd probably send some senior member here.
You fit the bill, huh?
Maybe I ought to go to them.
Trying to say, Rick.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to even it up, and that is one that actually, like I said, it's not a monthly thing, it's usually you go probably quarterly on that one too, so it's not one that ties up a lot of, lot of time, but. I just was looking into numbers, that's all.
I could do that one.
So.
It's your meeting to adjourn.
Actually, it's your meeting.
Before we adjourn, I do, can we back up at all or not at this point? Alan's here, do we want to back up and do that and let him?
We could, sure we can.
As you recall, we can do it.
You're in charge.
We'll back up and do that. Let Alan tell us on the grant.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm a couple minutes late.
You're not in the building.
I forgot I was in a different building. This grant, the HMEP grant, is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant, that's a federal DOT, Department of Transportation grant, we've applied for it last several years. If you remember, two years ago, I came before you and asked for us to apply for a grant and be the host county for the four counties in our judicial district, Anderson, Coffey, Franklin, and Osage. And at that time, we provided hazmat training that was hosted here in Franklin County and in Coffey County. In talking with the counties again, they wanted to apply for the grant again and ask if we would be the host, since we're the biggest county.
since we're the biggest county. This time, the hazmat training would be in Anderson and Osage Counties. And of course, our first responders are able to go to either one of those counties to attend the training. But additional, we added in this year, an exercise in each county. Which these exercises would, the grant has to be applied for by the fifteenth of this month. We won't know that we get the funds until October of this year, so it'll be next year that we're actually doing the, uh, training and exercising for it. We've got contractors noted in here that will do the training and the exercises, so there is, it's an eighty-twenty grant. They pay eighty percent, there's twenty percent that we can do with soft match. And that soft match can be the hourly, uh, we can just use the volunteer rate, which I think is twenty or twenty-one dollars now for the participants. And then we track our time also for getting everything set up. We have not had in the past, when we've applied for this grant, a problem, meet, meeting that twenty percent soft match. And then where it shows in this application, I think the total application is about forty thousand dollars. And then the soft match, of course, would be twenty-five percent would be our responsibility, since we have four counties, counting ours, that would be involved in this application or this grant.
And this is not new or different? I mean, if we've heard this, we've heard this before.
Yeah, well, we've actually got an HMEP grant going right now that's going to update our hazard analysis plan for the counties. So we've applied the last, I think, four or five years for it.
And it, and you've already indicated, just to make sure, is that we've not had any issues in the past of meeting our obligatory twenty percent on the basis of, of using soft dollars?
No.
At any of the, and that's for us. What about the other counties?
They haven't had a problem either. And when we do our grant, or our budgeting this spring, I'll talk with John to make sure that if we need to put that twenty percent for us in there, it'll be noted in the budget also, so we can make sure we don't have that issue when it comes to twenty seventeen.
And so in here, you show that the soft match, actually you've got a dollar amount of seven thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Of course, that's split four ways, so that's not a lot.
It's two thousand.
Two thousand bucks.
Yep. And for an exercise, that's pretty cheap. And for training for us, we had, we just about, last year with the training that we provided, we had twice the soft match that we needed. I think we had about fifty first responders that attended the training. I do need, uh, um, are we doing this, John, for the study session or for Wednesday's meeting, or?
This is act, or this is actually a meeting now. We could actually vote on this now.
Well, I do need a signature for the application from the commission chair.
If there's no other discussion from my fellow commissioners, I would make the motion that we go forward for an application for the HMEP Hazardous Material Emergency Preparedness Grant.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, well, this kind of throws me off a little bit with, uh, being this is a regular meeting, I guess we'll go ahead and do staff reports and it's not on my thing, so...
Um, commissioners, as you know, that there's been some questions about the nine-one-one interlocal agreement with the city. They've wanted, asked, requested to meet with us about that. Staff have scheduled a meeting with them this Friday to meet with them, with their, uh, the mayor and also city manager and their city attorney, and then the chair or, and myself, and Derek will be meeting with them to start discussions about the, that particular agreement.
And when's this meeting gonna be?
This is Friday.
Friday.
Friday. And, uh, we will report back to you on that as soon as, after that meeting at some point.
The conversation regarding interlocal agreements has come up, I mean, and we have three interlocal, or, well, currently three interlocal agreements. Is that correct, council?
I believe that to be the case.
Okay. Ha, has there been any other query or question about the third remaining interlocal agreement that we have in conjunction with the logistics part, property? Same as John? That's all?
Eric?
Nothing to do.
Sheriff?
Just in light of that, if you guys need any statistics or any information from the nine-one-one center, I will provide that to you. I've already, um, we pulled the statistics, um, so far for the last, um, the last year. Actually, we pulled them for the last two years for one person that had asked for those, but we, we do have them for, the last year, those have been provided to the county and to the city. But if any of you individually have specific questions and want clarification on it, that's why I'm here, is just to give that information. That's my only role in this.
Actually, administrator or sheriff, either one, if you've already pulled that, quite frankly, I'd, I'd been interested in, uh, in reviewing those statistics myself.
I, I have them already. I can send them to you.
Thank you.
Along with that, I would say is that I'm doing some evaluation of that, kind of going through the data and doing some calculations and some analysis of that data. And that will be provided to you, all the commissioners, when that's done.
You two have a...
Jim?
Jim? Okay, Commissioner comments?
I'd like to thank Cole Waymire for his years being chap, uh, chairman for us. And I want to congratulate Rick Arden for taking on that duty for the coming year.
Thanks, Troy.
I'll echo that. He's had some tough issues to deal with and dealt with them very well, I thought.
I, I would echo that as well. I think that Commissioner Waymire did a, as good a job as anyone actually that's sitting here on the, on the current commission could do, is that, uh, sitting in that, of course, we all can have arrows slung our way just by being an elected official, but the, the, the chairman becomes the focal point, if not the target, for the commission. And we appreciate you having thick skin and dealing with it in a diplomatic and friendly manner.
So thank you.
I, I'm not sure...
It's your turn to say something, right?
Uh, Chair, Chair Howard, how to go with this and so, you make, figure this out, but for over a year, I've really wanted to work on a project where we adopt, um, a cleanup, uh, opportunity for the citizens of the county for all county roads. And I was thinking during the month of March, but maybe the middle of March, the middle of April, but where we start with on what type of a study session and so forth, um, and who we need to bring in. I was actually gonna bring it up at our luncheon on Wednesday because of the department heads are there, but basically my, my thoughts are this. During that one month, either a church group, a school group, um, a public service group, or just an individual says, hey, I will adopt the thirty-three-hundred, thirty-five-hundred block of, you know, Kentucky. And that means both sides of the road, so you have two road, two miles of road ditches for one mile. And I've talked to Jim and some of the others about how many miles we actually have. No state roads, no city lim, roads inside city limits, you know, just county roads. And see how much of our road ditches we could actually clean in the month preceding when we start mowing. I think the trash bag issue would probably be the biggest cost or factor to take into effect, obviously the disposal of what we pick up, but I, I was willing to go to meet with every church group, school group, whatever I could get to, to do that. And we have two, three months, you know, thinking about it, but I would like for you to put that in your, uh, pipe and start thinking about how we can approach that and how we go about it. And maybe it's doable, maybe it's not, but even if we get a hundred miles done, or whatever it might be, that might be a thing to help with the county. But I'd really like to see us, uh, approach that. And maybe that's not the time of the year to do it, but that was just kind of my thought. So just want to throw that out and see where we go. And you can give me the direction of how to pursue it and I will do that.
Well, I'm not sure, we'd have to reach out to some of those people and see if they had an interest in doing it.
Well, the other thought I had is if, there was one person in the county who had the, um, what I want to call registration, where you say, you call in and say, I'm doing the thirty-three-hundred block to thirty-five-hundred block of Kentucky, and that person puts your name down, a contact number, and it's logged so that we, when they call in and say, I want to do a mile, well, somebody's already got that mile or don't have that mile registered. I'm sure on a computer spreadsheet, it can't be that difficult, but, um, that way we would know what was going to get done, what wasn't. Maybe even say, what week are you gonna do it during the March fifteen to April fifteen or, because I know in April, there's always that one day, free dump day or whatever it is, weekend. So, you know, with, with that type of thing, we, we might really get some progress. And data, so we know where we're at and what was done and what was. There are some roads, the minimum maintenance roads, or some others that are so brushy and treed or, uh, you know, the, there's bear, uh, guardrails and you're not gonna go down over that part that's not gonna get touched and that's okay, but...
Eric, would our insurance be fine with setup for, for that type of thing?
I'd, certainly I could give them a call, but off the top of my head, I don't know why they would have an issue with anything like that, so...
But, you know, there's gotta be pros and cons to doing that project, but I would really, you know, if it's feasible and something we can get started on, I, I think that's a, a thing to do for our county. That would really, really help us in the spring as we start. For those guys that are mowing too, that, you know, hey, picked up something out of the ditch and whatnot.
I know when we did the, and I, I don't know if it still exists or not, it probably does, because I think there's still signs up, doesn't mean the programs still, still exist, but when I was involved in the Adopt a Highway, I think there was actually a, a release of liability forms that were signed by, uh, by the organization that was taking charge, but then there was a release of liability signed by each of the individuals that was helping walk along the roadway and clean up.
Oh, yeah, I would mandate that everyone participating sign a release, but that's simple enough.
But there's so many high schools, you know, within our, our county, that we go to those people and meet with them and they have subgroups, I'm sure, and the church groups and the service groups and just some individuals along the road say, hey, let's get together and clean our mile up this time. I don't know.
Boy Scouts used to be involved and Girl Scouts too.
I'm sure there's, you know, there's always people that are willing to do that. If we can organize something countywide and we get the media with us and really go to work on that, I, I, it'd be interesting to see what we can actually get done.
Right. Anything else?
Guess with that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved, sir.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.